Okay, good evening. I would like to call this July 17th, 2023 Slovenia Board of Education meeting to order. You can call the roll, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Conklin?
Here.
Ms. Lavallette?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I would like to start out this meeting with a moment of silence. Unfortunately, our district in Northview High School lost a student this week. And our hearts go out to the family of Tristan Apgar, who again was going to go into his junior year at Northview. So I would like to just take a moment of silence to recognize Tristan and to send positive thoughts to his family. Okay, we will start out our meeting with you, Dr. Marley. Thank you, Ms. Conklin. Good evening, everyone. A couple of highlights to share, although it is summer here in Slovenia schools. I have to tell you, I have to send positive feedback and high accolades to our custodial staff and the guys that are working in our grounds and maintenance department. I will tell you, I've had a chance to walk through some buildings and the floors are just sunshine. They look sick and spankin' new and our custodians are really working hard. You know, it's grueling hot in the buildings even though we have air conditioning. They are really grinding away to make sure our buildings are ready to go for our students next month. Just fixing things, painting, moving furniture, moving furniture back where furniture was, just doing a number of things to prepare our district. So a shout out to our custodians and our maintenance crew that is really, they're working hard to make sure that our buildings are spectacular for our students. I also would like to share that our junior highs are now, I believe, equipped with vape sensors. I understand that some communication went out to a few of our families in the junior high to make sure that our parents are aware that our restrooms are now equipped with vape sensors. And I know Melissa McDonald, the Director of Student Support Services, worked with our building principals to make sure that they had followed the guidelines and protocol in regards to expectations for our code of conduct regarding that. In addition, I will attend a welcome reception for Dr. Bill Bisset, who is the new Lord's University President. I will participate in that event this coming Wednesday. And on a small note, but a mighty note, for those of you who may be watching this at another time, we have a flagpole in front of 4747. It was donated by our local BMW along with the flag. That has been on there for about a week now. So we're very thankful to the BMW to donate the flagpole and the flag to 4747, which is our administration building here in Slovenia schools. And that concludes... Oh, one little thing. As for as a person who serves on the chamber, we have Pizza Palooza this weekend, a great family event at Centennial Terrace. So please come out and support our local pizza vendors. It's a great family event, lots of fun and enjoyment. I think there's nine different vendors that will have pizza there and just have a chance to gorge out on all the pizza you want and all the different types. So please come and join us this weekend. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is our first opportunity for public participation for agenda items. And we have none, so we will be moving on to you, Mr. Fowler.
So treasurer's report for the month. I just want to go over real brief. Just gave you guys a little handout to kick home. But a fiscal year in review, just showing our total revenues and our total expenses for the year, kind of compared to last school year. And I highlighted some differences there. But in total, our revenues, a little over $97 million, and our expenses, a little over 93. So we did have a $4.5 million surplus this year, given our general fund balance as of June 30th at $36,243. And then I did highlight kind of where our fund balances have been the last five years. You know, generally on the revenue side, our property taxes being our, you know, 70% of our revenue there, that was up a little over 1%. So that's a big chunk there in $800,000. And then the other highlight, which we've talked about over the course of this year, is our other operating revenue, which is our... The bulk of that increase there was our interest rate or interest income for the general fund. With this environment that our economy has, it's kind of works differently than some. But for government money and government investments, the interest rates aren't really good. So 5%, we're getting in Star, Ohio, and a year ago it was less than a quarter of a percent. So we are benefiting from this government rate environment and very secure finance and secure investments. So that was a big chunk. So overall revenues are pretty much, were exactly what we were last year. But we did change how we do some transfers and advances. So our revenues were actually up about $900,000 when you take into account that interest and our property taxes there. The expense side of things, our expenses did go up just 1.2%, which is relatively a positive note. I mean, we gave some raises out, we give step increases. And then just in general with the inflation, the way they are with our utilities and our transportation costs, with our expenses only at 1.2%, felt pretty good about that. You know, salaries overall went up 3.2%. We had a lot of repairs and maintenance throughout the building, throughout the district. We are trying to really dive into everything in and outside of our building. So our repairs and maintenances are up. And then our special education costs are also up pretty significantly, you know, district wide. So that was a big chunk of our purchase services increase. And then we bought a lot of technology this year that we needed to keep up with the times. We got some Promethean boards in our district. And then it was time for a lot of computer upgrades and Chromebooks. So that is part of the supplies increase there. So this overall, a good year. I'll do a more in-depth analysis and projections with the five-year forecast coming up in late October, early November. But I also wanted to kind of highlight, the budget bill was passed a couple of days after July 1st there. Come back and forth. So a positive note, we did see more of the House numbers, which is that $3 million increase. Now, I will say that, you know, where those lines fall, whether it's the unrestricted or if they add more money in some restricted funding for career tech and things, but also the voucher bill did pass. So there's... The risk would be if we would lose a lot of students, we actually wouldn't see that $3 million increase because it's funding, you know, per child, even us now with the fair funding formula. So, but we are on a guarantee, so we won't lose... We wouldn't lose more than last year's actual collection, so. Do I think we're there? No. But I just wanted to kind of share that potential that if we had a mass exodus, we wouldn't see that $3 million increase. And I'm very confident to say that we're not going to see a mass exodus in Slovenia. But, you know, that is, when I say, hey, we're going to get $3 million more, it's not 100% that that's exactly how it's going to shake out. Those are just estimates and things like that. So I will definitely forecast that, but we'll know more by October.
Does that kick in for this school year or the next school year?
Yeah, this year, this coming school year, yeah. There was an article in the Dispatch or somewhere, USA Today or something, about this. And generally, what they're thinking and projecting is the majority of the budget, majority of the vouchers, are going to go to current enrolled students in a flood of new students from, you know, public schools in Northview, Ohio. It's kind of where we are budget-wise. You know, once we get the actual, you know, dollars flowing and exactly what line items they're going to be, I'll be able to update you more later. But we will see, hopefully see about a $3 million increase from our state funds. Any kind of questions on those two items? All right, 4.1, approval of minutes of previous meetings. Kim was not there, so if we want to do that one separately and then we can consent agenda from there.
I'll move for approval, item 4.1.
I'll second. Okay, any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
I'm saying.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Okay, 4.2 to 4.4. 4.2 is just treasurer's report for the month. I kind of did touch that on my year-end review there. 4.3, availability of funds, you know, our monthly approval there. The one Toledo Edison is large and it was just a... We close POs at the end of the year. We try not to leave anything hanging out there. We accidentally closed a PO and that's what that is. So we obviously knew that was coming and knew that it was an obligation that we were due. So, but it's over three grand, so we have to put it on there. And then 4.4, it's that time of year we're getting ready for the audit. And Clark Shaver Hackett's going to do our GAAP conversion again. That'll get started here at the end of the month. Wrapped up in August, hopefully. And then our auditors will come in right behind them and audit our fiscal year '23 books. So in the hopes of by the end of Thanksgiving, or the end of November, early December, when everything wrapped up. So that's kind of the timeline where we stand. So this will be our second year with Clark Shaver Hackett. So they will get started here. So this treasurer recommendations for the month.
I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 4.2 through 4.4.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Back to you, Dr. Marley. Thank you, Ms. Conklin. I recommend item 5.1, the recommended approval of a contract between the Board of Education and Mr. Bill Gekha as a substitute intervention counselor for the upcoming school year. And this has been an annual item for some time now.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Any questions? Call the roll.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.2, the appointment of Ms. Monica Clark Ekel as the Assistant Principal of Sylvan and Whiteford Elementary for a two-year contract.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Any questions? I have some comments. I would like to share a little bit about Monica. Monica is here tonight and it's my pleasure to share a little bit about Monica and what she brings to the table. So I did some research. So Monica has degrees from both the University of Toledo and Bowling Green. First, I believe she has a pre-K 3 teaching license. That's where you started. You also went back and, let's see, earned a degree in curriculum?
Yes.
And then also went back and got an administrative degree in educational administration, so well-educated. She has served for several years as the principal at Reynoldsburg, or yeah, Reynolds Elementary. Reynolds Elementary and TPS, where you also served as an assistant principal at one time, I understand. She has experienced teaching first grade, kindergarten, being a substitute teacher, which is really where you really cut your teeth. And also, I think prior to becoming a substitute teacher, I believe this is accurate, you served as a summer camp counselor?
Yeah.
And administrator. So you bring a wealth of knowledge and experience. She did go through an interview process and was the first choice for the position. And we're glad that she's come aboard and will serve as a part of our team. So welcome, Monica, based on the board's approval. Okay, call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Monica, did you have anything that you would like to say or...
I am so excited for this opportunity. And I actually had the privilege previously to work with Julie Galt over at Reynolds. So I'm very excited to work with her closely again and very, very excited to serve Slovenia in this new role. So thank you for having me.
Welcome. Okay. No, we already did. All right, I'm going to recommend item 5.3, the appointment of Stephen Kyle Knuckle as interim Assistant Superintendent for Slovenia Schools.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Any questions or comments? I do have some comments.
That scared me.
Kyle comes to us with a wealth of experience and knowledge. He has previously served as the superintendent of the Wood County ESC and also Riverview Local Schools down in Koshokton County. He is known to be a servant leader, a mentor. He is well-respected by his peers in the areas and, or in the area. And we value his experience and what he will bring to the table as we go through this transition year. So welcome, Kyle. We appreciate your expertise as you will be a part of our team as well.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Looking forward to it. By the way, can I have a copy of what you just said? Really looking forward to it. Been in education for 40 years. Served as a math teacher and a basketball coach way, way long time ago. Went up the ranks, assistant principal, principal. And then served 14 years as superintendent at Riverview. You might notice my accent. Yes, I'm from eastern Ohio. And then served seven years at Wood County ESC and then retired for the last five years. And then I've done some things in the last five years that I've enjoyed being around kids. So I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, call the roll.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome. I recommend item 5.4, extended days for Ms. Brittany Robbins. That would be up to seven days to serve in her capacity to help with the getting of a start of the year for Maplewood Elementary.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.5, the ESC contract for Sued Board. This is an annual item.
I'll move for approval.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.6, which allows the Board of Education to pass a resolution for the Ohio School Boards Association's Legal Assistance Fund.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.7, the master plan agreement with the collaborative that will help us develop our master plan for the Slovenia schools.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.8, which is also an annual agreement, I do believe, for our partnership with the ESC program. So this is a cost agreement for the services in which they provide for the '23, '24 school year.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, well, how does this cost differ largely?
Relatively the same, little increase depending on how difficult it is to secure some positions like a speech-language pad, but they're relatively insignificant.
And the actual cost will end up determining the number of days we actually need, the number of kids that actually serve, so.
Okay, call the roll.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend the approval of Board Policy, which is policy 2431, the extracurricular and co-curricular drug testing policy and Code of Conduct.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tebbersky.
Thank you. I will recommend items 6.1 through 6.4 on a consent agenda basis. 6.1, our licensed new teachers. 6.2, our licensed reservations. 6.3, licensed extra duty.
I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 6.1 through 6.4.
I got 6.4.
Go ahead.
Silent. I did. 6.4 is administrative subs. Thank you. I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments on any of those? Call the roll.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I will recommend items 7.1 through 7.3 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1, classified personnel changes. 7.2, classified hires. And 7.3 are classified substitute rates for the '23, '24.
Can I please pull 7.3 out to discuss first?
Yeah, we have, we're just doing separate. So I recommend 7.1, classified personnel changes. I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. I will recommend item 7.2, classified hires. I'll move for approval.
Oh, wait. Is that the one you pulled out?
Yeah, it's 7.3.
So we're doing 7.2 separately?
Yes.
Okay.
Just do 7.1 and 7.2 separately.
Okay.
I got Greg as first, you know, a second.
I'll second. Any questions or comments? All right, go ahead, call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and 7.3, recommend classified substitute rates for '23, '24.
Okay.
I think we need a motion first.
I'll move for approval. I'll second. Questions or comments?
Yeah, so, and I called Josh earlier about this, my concerns with the human capital substitute and the administrative assistant to the treasurer. Since these are new ideas, I have concerns that those are actually substitute positions, I mean, as it was explained to me. So I guess I, I've been pondering it all day and I'm still as uncomfortable as I was when I talked to him.
Yeah, I've talked to him about it. So I'll just give a little background of what Adam and I talked about when we looked at the substitute rates. And I'll go with those two positions. So we have substitute rates out here that we are approving for next year. We wanted them to reflect them. Traditionally, the 4% increase that we did across all of our salary schedules. So we decided we needed to approve all of them. What we found is that not every single one of our classifications had an actual board approval substitute rate. So for instance, lifeguards, mechanics, we don't have substitutes for them. We never really have ever gotten substitutes for them. However, if we approve them, it's there if needed, just in case. And so those have never been board approved, either the lifeguards or the mechanics. But we figured if there's a salary schedule and the collective bargaining agreement, you should also probably have a board subrate for that salary schedule. So we came across, that's where we got the majority of them. The bottom two, yes, are new, no, are not new. So that's where the confusion comes in a little bit. So I'll take them one at a time. The administrative assistant to the treasurer, we had substitutes for that position.
And it was the same rate that we've approved in the past. I just decided to throw it on here. So it's in one document when we look at all the subrates, like when we had Matt, we had Hema, those positions, those subs were there. And that rate was already approved by, not by me, but...
So I guess I heard my question to that would be, but like Matt wasn't really a substitute. I mean, he was working there five days a week. So I guess here's my question. Let's just say I'm not on board and I'm approved sub and I, Hema's going to be out and then I'm the sub. Is that what I'm getting paid? If I'm just coming for a day because Hema's not here?
Yeah, that's what it would be, yeah.
Are they classified?
Exempt.
Right, so...
Or are they under classified?
They're pre-primed, Monica. Would that be, both positions would be exempt. What's a human capital sub? So we, and this would be where it's new but not new. So what we've done in the past for both of these positions is, and they're not... So if you need a position for a day, we don't fill it with subs for a day. We don't fill it with someone just to answer the phone or leave the door. So these are usually people that are skilled in that specific area. So for instance, Hema or Matt or Rose Albert, who did the administrative assistant to the treasurer, human capital substitute, we've used but never under that title. What we've done is we board-approved individuals at a specific grade. So we've had some retirees off of the first floor here that we brought back to train some folks. Some people off the second floor who were retirees that we brought back to train folks. So we never train, we never put them on in any grouping. We just approved the person at the pay rate and how many hours. This would allow us to use those retirees for training substitutes. And it's, it's on there, it's very limited. We may use it two or three times a year for two or three individuals. So it's not that we are filling that role just to get, it's usually... What we filled it before with were retirees that were skilled in specific areas to train people.
But they're not really substitutes then. They're coming in as a trainer to train new people in a job. So they're not really subbing for anybody, right?
Yeah, but they're not contracted trainers either. What this does is give us an avenue and a pathway to pay people. It's really all this, all this item does is allow payroll to say, we can pay them. Has it been a problem in the past to just board-approve individuals for certain? No, this is just an efficiency. We could board-approve individuals for so many hours at a certain rate.
Then you said it's just like twice a year, right?
It's only a handful of times a year. I mean, I don't want to, we all know, I don't know if I want to say it makes a problem too, but basically retirees on the second floor that came back and trained some secretaries up there, first floor here, physical services, there was retirement, should bring back a big time to train people. For me, I think I'd prefer to keep the board approved.
You're still board approving the people. They're, you're still, like, people are still getting approved.
So they still have to come to the board to get approved?
Oh, all right.
So if you bring in somebody to work as a trainer for three days, you're still going to put them on the board agenda to get approved?
They have to, yeah. Any, any, any people that we pay as employees, substitutes, or full-time, they're always, yeah.
So this just then, what, because it... How is that possible? So if someone is subbing for a teacher, we're not approving it, I mean... Well, but they're approved as subs. Yeah, as subs, yeah.
Yeah, they're subs, yeah. They're still named, right?
They may come some force at some point. Yeah, I was, I thought you meant like each time somebody's subs were approved.
No, 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 no.
We approve people. But this is, if this is a short-term, well, number one, if these guys are exempt and they're being approved under this classified substitute hourly rate, I think that's confusing. But even if we pulled it out and just said, okay, these are exempt subs, it, I mean, I know what Julie's saying, it doesn't sound like they're actual subs. It sounds like we're just bringing people in for like temp work.
Called temporary.
Like temporary workers. So, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't have any objections to the rate or to what we're doing. I just, and as long as we're still approving these people as they're brought on.
Yeah, we will never, we will never pay somebody that we've not approved.
So, but so, so what you're saying is like, in the next board meeting, there might be five people, here are the names that are approved as human capital substitutes and administrative assistants to the treasurer substitutes.
We have one, we have one today. Sue Passion's going to, going to come back and provide us some, some help when Hema's gone and help on a small project that she used to be a long-term payroll, you know, employee and, yeah.
So when we've had people come into serving these roles in the past, has it always been $20 an hour?
It was for most of the time.
There is, and I know we've done a few retirees, I think, if I'm not mistaken, they were at the 17 or 18. But Adam and I, because it's a skilled, temporary employee. And then one of, I mean, this is kind of separate, but one of the concern that I had is, so it was not clear on this that those two are brand new. Like, so we see this list, right, of all these different subs, and it's like, okay, so we approve every year. You know, I kind of what I kind of did, blogs over, I didn't realize those last two were brand new until Julie pointed it out.
A couple of them are brand new, though, right?
Yeah, a lot of them are. But there's no way for me to know those two are brand new, just looking at this. So I was a little concerned about that. Yeah.
We did approve, just in June, a substitute administrative assistant to the treasurer at $20 an hour. I think this is just a way to formalize what the pay range is going to be when we do, when they do appoint someone to fill that position. I mean, the terminology, calling them a substitute, I think is a little confusing.
We wouldn't do it.
I just wanted to be clear that those were new on this list. I didn't know that, when I looked at it.
But they're not, we have, we have had those positions.
Well, but then, we've never got them on that list.
On the salary schedule.
We've always individually approved people, whatever.
No, in June of, in June of '22, you guys approved, recommend the board approve a substitute administrative assistant to the treasurer whose position would be at a rate of $20 per hour. There was no name to that. The rate was there and the title, that was on. It was there in June, the last June.
I mean, I kind of like that we're formalizing how much positions are going to pay when they're not associated with people. I prefer that. I'm just confused by the temporary, I guess, aspect of it. It doesn't sound like it's really a temporary, or I mean, on substitute, it sounds like it's more of a temporary position than a substitute.
The hard thing with a temporary position is you got to run through folks in collective bargaining as well just to create a temporary position. That's why we bring them in there as subs.
But these are exempt, right?
Those two would be exempt, correct? So those two, outside of all the other ones, the human capital substitute and the administrative assistant to the treasurer, being that they're exempt positions, we wouldn't need to worry about contractual range. So you're right in that aspect.
We definitely could have handled that better. I, I'll take ownership of that.
Yeah, I think the exempt thing, you guys made three points on that.
It just seems a little messy to me.
So what do you guys want to do? Do we pull it out and put them back on, or do we just pull them out too often and put them on as exempt somewhere else? So they're not...
Well, can we just re, can we just re-categorize it as, I mean, we've already pulled it out of the consent agenda. Well, but this whole, they're all together on this list. Yeah, I think you're saying like pull those off and they would bring them back because what badly on them? So would there be, so in this, would there be any other non-exempt positions that would need to be a part of that list, or are these the only two non-exempt, like subtype positions or temporary type help we would bring in?
Those would be the only two, because the human capital substitute catches, you know, both the first floor and the second floor as, as a trainer. What it does is really brings them to train some.
I mean, we could just carve it out of that list and then make a separate motion to approve those as the pay rates for those exempt positions, or bring it back on another meeting, whatever.
You wouldn't technically have to approve mine again, because this was already done.
Yeah.
And we could just pull them out.
Let's just pull...
And then we could bring them back, or we could just do it individually, like we have them best, and it hasn't been a problem.
Right.
We've done it before, we've just done it with individually.
And I think, I mean, my, as long as we're still seeing who's getting put in these